Good morning, Mayor.
Okay.
I do remember now.
Okay.
Because he was in the office. We'll get by.
The Senate to know we aren't.
Seven o'clock, June 18th. Time for the regular meeting of the Waverly City Council. If I could have the roll call, please.
Bergen.
Here.
Drakeout.
Here.
Kenzie.
Here.
Rossi.
Here.
Changus.
Changus absent, and Mike Shear is absent. Both with permission. Entertained a motion to approve the agenda is presented.
Move approval of the agenda.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those, any discussion, corrections? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Agenda approved. Five, zero, two absent. Approval of the minutes. Approved June 4th, 2018, regular meeting minutes. Entertain a motion, please.
I will move approval of the June 4th, 2018, regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
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 Minutes approved. Next item, public comments for any item not on the agenda. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to the council and staff?
Good evening, council and mayor and all the other delegates around the half circle in the room. I'm George Miller. I own the property, some of the property directly south of the buildings going up at 101 and 104 Cedar Valley, or Cedar River Parkway. And this last weekend, I guess the proverbial straw that broke the camel's back just happened to happen. I was about to build a fence between myself and the next door neighbor because of continual encroachment on their part. While I used to be, worked for a land surveyor, so I'm not green to it. I had located the pins and set up a transit and was locating a site on the other end to locate the line. And that was not easy to do because they had a construction equipment parked on the line. So anyway, I was walking back and forth there quite a few times, and finally a person came along identifying himself, I would call like the building construction manager. And he wanted to know what I was doing, and I indicated that I was in the process of putting up a fence, which would have isolated that building, or that construction piece of equipment. And he wanted to know why. And I said, well, I've just finally got fed up with the encroachment on my side. At one time, they were, had construction debris and material 25 feet onto my side. And there was never any communication between the contractor, or the builder, or anyone. And I just finally got fed up with it. And after the discussion started, he kept saying, well, we have a permit. We've got approved drawings. He says, what's the problem? And my point was to him is that you couldn't construct this from his side with the setbacks that were granted. And every time I was trying to present my case of being stepped on, that's all he kept saying. So he finally says, well, what are you doing now? I said, I'm going to build this fence. He said, how do you know where the line is? I located the pins. Who put the pins in? Well, at that point, I decided I was not talking to the right person because I certainly didn't put them in, and that was the implication. So anyway, after discussions with him, and he ensured me that they were going to restore the site better than it was, and grade it, and seed it, and everything, I decided to forego the fence. But my point wasn't satisfied. The point that I have is that it is impossible to build that building from their side of the fence. There is an inlet that is approximately, the center line is approximately the size of a manhole. That's, the center line is approximately 10 and a half feet from their building. If it had a back setback, that should have been 15 feet, but from what I understand, that was changed to 12. And so they had a foot and a half to deal with to put that in. There is no ditch diggers around this part of the country anymore, and the only way they would have got it in is by hand. And with the equipment they used, they had an eight-foot wide trencher that was centerlined on that line. Any mathematical genius can figure out that that's got to be on my side. He wanted to know how I knew my side, and I says, I, he said I should contact, or have the line located before I contact the city. And I turned around, and I said, I don't need my line located when I can see 25 feet on my side is not yours. And so our discussions kind of fell apart. But in any case, I don't understand why, I mean, the contractor, I really don't have any qualms with him because I've talked to the superintendent, this building manager, the person that represented himself as the owner, which, be it as it may. All those people just said, I didn't think it'd bother anybody. We had a permit, and we had approved building drawings. And I guess where I'm coming from is whoever's granting these needs to have a little construction experience or knowledge because there should have been no reason that I needed to come here tonight. And I guess I leave it there. Because at this point, I guess I'm going to get it repaired, and I guess if I don't, I'll be back, but I suspect they'll do that. But to me, that is absolutely ridiculous that I needed to be here. Thank you.
Hey, George, thank you. Anyone else in the audience have anything they'd like to speak about that's not on the agenda? Hearing none. We'll move on to the consent calendar, which consists of four items, one of which have been asked to pull out of there for somewhere down the road. Number one is pay request from Modern Builders Incorporated for the Waverly Municipal Airport Volcano Improvements 2017 for $20,545. Pay request from T&amp;W Grinding for the grinding of brush piles and leaves for $15,600, and the cash disbursements for May of 2018. Entertain a motion.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any council discussion?
So we've removed the public hearing on the sidewalk program?
Yes, Mike asked to have it removed. They're not, they're not ready. So it's be down the line a ways. Any other questions, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed? Consent calendar approved. Five, zero, two absent. Regular business. Approving the list of fiscal year 2018 transfers. Entertain a motion?
I would move approval of the 2018 transfers.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Jennifer, would you have anything you'd like to add to the transfers?
They're just the transfers that were budgeted and/or discussed later on that needed to be transferred to allocate funds to different funds or projects.
Thank you.
So this isn't actually spending money, it's just moving money between the different accounts?
That's correct.
Any other questions?
This, I noticed, and for a late person, this got a little confusing because there was at least one spot where the money was transferred from account A into account B, and then the very next line, it was transferred back from account B to account A. I assume that was just to close out an account and then open it back up again for the new year?
It was to close out an account because I thought all the funds were received, and we were sure it was, was $1,257. And I just wanted to show that's what had happened. We had received funds then to cover that amount, so, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor approving the list of fiscal year 2018 year transfer, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carried. Five, zero, two absent. Approving, item number two, approving resolution 1889, a resolution directing sale of GO bonds, series 2018A. Entertain a motion?
I think we'll have to have the dollar amount entered in there before we can make a motion.
Is that what's on here? So I will move approval, resolution 1889, a resolution directing sale of $11 million general obligation bonds, series 2018A.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. There are some representatives from Spear Financial here to fill us in.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Maggie Berger with Spear Financial. We have laid a couple of documents in front of you this evening that we will go through for the general obligation and the water revenue bonds. With me, I have John Murphy, a colleague of mine from our office. Up this morning, Larry Berger from our office and John were here. They took bids at 10:30 and at 11:00. The 10:30 bids were for the general obligation bonds. The 11 o'clock bids were for the water revenue bonds. The first letter that we've laid in front of you for those general obligation bonds show you that we received three bids, which are listed. We are recommending the low bid from Robert W. Baird of Milwaukee, Wisconsin, at a 2.7491%. Should also be noted that the purchase price is 11,153,882.20. That does mean that they are going to be paying the city a premium of $153,000. We do see premiums, especially at this large of a bond issue. We see premiums when they want a little bit higher interest rate to be able to remarket the bonds. Today's interest rate market is about a 2.74%. The underwriter felt that they needed 3% interest rates to be able to remarket because we are in a rate, a rate rising environment, meaning that short-term interest rates are going up, and these are 10-year bonds. And to be able to resell to potential underwriters, they are going to need to pay you some money to get that higher interest rate. So that is what they are doing today. If we flip past page one, we've included your Moody's Investor Services report. This is reaffirming the city's Moody's investment rating at a AA3. This is the rating that you've held for a number of years. We want to thank your administrative staff, between James, Jennifer, and Bill, that they did a very good job of presenting and hosting a little bit of a tour for the Moody's representatives from Chicago and New York City when they were in the area, doing some other ratings visits. We also did a follow-up phone call, and of course, they answered all of the questions with great ease of knowledge. They knew everything they were talking about. They were very diligent on the call, and we do appreciate that on their behalf. So we recognize that. We have highlighted a few items for you, and we won't go through this line by line, but I always do point out the factors that could lead to a downgrade. We talk about it every time we have a bond sale. Moody's likes cash, so if you materially delete your reserve fund and spend down that reserve fund, that is what, is something that would lead to either a negative outlook or them possibly going ahead with the downgrade. We do talk about how the city has grown its tax base over the last five years, and how that has grown, you know, at 3% or more over that five-year period. We talk about how the general fund has also a very healthy cash balance. And why that's important is that just means that if something were to happen, the city would be able to operate for a number of months ahead of having to take any kind of drastic actions to go get any kind of cash to just run the general operations of the city and keep you in the budget that you had approved prior to that. So it does talk about, you have short repayment, meaning that your debt is all fixed, and that you repay that debt on a very rapid repayment schedule. And they definitely like to see that at Moody's, and the potential underwriters. So then it goes on for a couple more pages, and then, of course, they give you one page to tell you why they're not responsible for this rating that they've just provided you. So that's the fine print in the gray at the back. We go past that page, and we look at a page similar to this, if everyone can see it, it has your logo on it. And this does show you where those bids came in at. We have Robert Baird there. They have a syndicate with them, and that really means, these are the people that they've been in contact with. These are people that potentially will be buying this. I want to explain that $11 million, last year you had six bids, this year you had three bids. That, it was very typical. We expected to only see three, maybe four bids, possibly even two bids today. And that's because these bonds are what's called non-bank qualified. Anything at $10 million in one calendar year or below is considered bank-qualified on the tax-exempt side. And that just means banks have every authority and every right to purchase these bonds, and have some benefits from the federal government that go along with purchasing these types of bonds. The federal government has not changed the bank qualification law since 1986. We hope and push that in the future they will increase that because we all know projects have gotten bigger since 1986. But at $11 million for your borrowing needs on the GO side, and even the 1.6 on the water, together cumulative, they exceed the $10 million, making them non-BQ. Three bids is very nice turnout for the non-bank qualified, and we were very happy with the rates. 2.74 is that low interest rate. The second low interest rate is 2.78, so just about four basis points. .04% separate those. But as you can see right underneath those rates, that's the total interest that will be paid if you hold it, if you held on to these bonds until maturity. That's over, that's just under $100,000 difference. So even just four basis points at $11 million makes a significant difference. And then we were very happy to see that low interest rate. Just looking back in our file, we, when we were projecting and giving you some projections around the time of your budget, we were thinking these rates could be somewhere in the 3.2% range. So we're very happy to see that 2.74 number, even in a rising rate environment. The Federal Reserve did move to raise rates just last week. So we always hope that when we're giving you runs, we are, we're being a little conservative, but we're never really sure, especially when interest rates are on the rise. So we did have that third bid. They were a little bit higher than the other two, and these are firms that we typically see bidding on this size of a deal. The very last page of the handout for the general obligation does show that we have a call date on 6/1 of 2025. That is an optional redemption date, and it's only at your option. That means if interest rates are lower at that time, you may have the opportunity to refinance. If interest rates are higher, you can just continue to hold on to your bonds and pay them till maturity. You also have the option to redeem the bonds in whole or in part at that time. So if you have some cash ahead and wanted to call some of those bonds in, or all of those bonds in, you'd have the opportunity to do that at that time. Again, your option only. So with that, I'd answer any questions that you have on the general obligation side. And we would recommend that you do award this evening, per the resolution, for the general obligation bonds to be sold to Robert Baird at that interest rate of 2.7491%.
Any questions from the council?
Given that, do we need to amend the motion to include the full dollar amount and the recommendation?
Probably want to include the 11, made $153,000.
You actually just need to include the 11 million because you are only borrowing 11 million, which is the principal amount. The 153 is a bonus to you. They're going to give that to you. You only owe the 11 million dollars back. So I think the 11 million should be fine.
And there are times when we'll have much larger premiums. If you look at the next bid, as Maggie was talking about, they were going to offer almost a 3/4 million dollar premium, which would have been just given to us without having to repay it. They really wanted that interest up there to resell it. When it gets to be that large, we would probably not accept that much money ahead of time. We would reduce the overall debt we're going to borrow instead. We would reshape that so that it would not be such a substantial outlay of money as we would not need it. With some of the projects we have not started yet, 153,000 on 11 million is not really that much overall to have as a contingency in case something were to go unexpected. And so that's why we allowed it to be absorbed in, this one. You'll have a very similar case in the water bonds at a much smaller amount, about $15,000. So some offer discounts. They wanted to pay them to take that, they wanted to give us money in return. So it's kind of a line you walk as to how much money will you accept additional or not, because we don't want to take in a whole lot of extra money. We still have to expend a certain amount of time to not, you know, to follow the SEC requirements. So if we would have taken the second bid, or they would have been a hair lower, you could have 3/4 million dollars extra thrown at you to do what you wanted with, but I don't think we'd have accepted it, so.
What is the amount of time within which you have to expend?
They set requirements out to have a certain amount or a certain percentage spent within six months, one year, I think 18 months, and then two years.
18 months, 24 months, and then about three years is really what you're hitting for to spend all of it. That 24-month period, they're really looking at what we would call about 85% spent, so that you kind of have that punch list left, that seeding, that's, you know, going back in and looking at projects and making sure that everything has been done, and if there needs to still be follow-up on that. Now, with that being said, natural disasters or things that happen weather-related can stall that. In all actuality, the IRS really would not start to ask for your spend down till about five years after you take the bond proceeds. And really what they're trying to limit you from doing is taking the bond proceeds and sitting and investing them until, and making money on them, which you cannot do, so.
That would be the arbitrage we talk about once in a while. We would have to pay that back.
Correct.
In a rising market, we have to watch that more so than a declining market for rates. And so as we go forward, we want to make sure we track our arbitrage calculations and make sure we are not making money on this. But knowing what we borrowed it for, and we've already spent over a million of it, it's going pretty quick. I'm not worried about us having it for two years. I'm hoping we have enough for two years. So that's one of the things we want to do. But in all seriousness, when we were talking about, you know, Cedar Lane or some other projects, if we would have bonded ahead and not spent that money down accordingly, that's kind of a risk I don't like to usually get us into. So we'll try and only get after what we need and can get spent a year to two years, and not have it just sit idle. Because there are, again, requirements, and the bond attorneys get real tight about that, six months, nine months. They want to see some definite spend down, because that's the point of doing this, not to sit and hold it.
Yeah.
And this purchase would be effective today?
Yes, so you would be locking in the interest rates today, the actual closing date, and I'm going to look here, because if I don't, I will screw it up. The actual closing date is July 17th. So yeah, but you would be locking in your interest rates today. There takes about 30 days from the day we sell till the day of closing. You'll have some additional documents on your next council, and those will really just be simply resolutions now that all the documents are filled in, all the blanks are filled in. We don't have time to fill in the blanks between the sale this morning and your meeting this tonight. Bond council just can't make that happen, so.
Any other questions for Maggie? Okay, thank you very much for the input, and I'm sure we'll figure out a way to spend that extra money before very long, so.
We'll let you take that action, and I'll come back up for your line of revenue.
Thank you, Maggie.
So we need to amend the resolution?
No, sir, we don't amend it. Principal only is what we're going to pay back, sir.
So all those need a roll call vote approving resolution 1889, resolution directing sale of $11 million general obligation bonds, series 2018A. Roll call, please.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drakeout?
Yes.
Kenzie?
Yes.
Rossi?
Yes.
Paulstein?
Yes.
Resolution passed. Five, zero, two absent. Item number three, approving resolution 1890, a resolution directing sale of water revenue bonds, series 2018B. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution, resolution 18-90, a resolution directing the sale of $1,650,000 water revenue bonds, series 2018B.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Council discussion. Input from Ms. Berger.
I did just notice, we have an error on our letter. It is 1,655,000. As you were all saying that, I was like, wait a second, hold on, sorry. The debt service schedule on the very back page is correct. My apologies for that. Every other page is correct except for that front letter. I will, I will take full responsibility for that. So I was like, we sold 1,655,000. I know that we did. So again, we had two bids. These, again, were not bank-qualified because cumulatively with the 11 million, they are tax-exempt bonds, and they exceeded the $10 million. We did see Robert Baird be the winner of this bid as well. Robert Baird was out in an aggressive format today at the 2.8131%. Now, I will tell you, in looking at interest rates, we did think this would be even in the 3.5% interest rate range. So this is even a little bit lower from a aggregate standpoint than what we were looking at on the GO side of things. They are going to pay you, as James said, about $15,000 in a premium, a little bit less, but less more, less money, 1.655 instead of 11 million. We also had to have a rating then done for the water revenue side of things. It was done at the same time, but your administration not only spoke about the general obligation side of things and your general fund, but also about the water revenue system itself. So we've included that. It does talk about keeping your annual debt service coverage in place for future or additional borrowing. And that's important. I know that you guys have entered in, in the past years, into some rate increases in anticipation of some of these projects, and we applaud you for doing that and getting kind of ahead of the game. I think Moody's also liked to see that, so that you were able to project and show really where those revenues are going to be. From a revenue side of things, I want to remind you that you have a debt service payment that is due. They're going to want to see that your net revenues of the system, and that's your revenues minus your expenses, that those net revenues of the system are exceeding what that debt payment is. And the reason for that is it is a revenue base. It is not a general obligation or a tax base that you can just levy the property taxes on. For example, if there would be an area of town that you could not pump water to for a week or 10 days, you cannot bill them water if you are not providing them water services. So all of a sudden, you could be operating on a budget where not all of your customers are really paying on the 12 months that you budgeted for, and that lessens your actual revenues of the system. So there's some, some things that are taken into account that way. We also have a reserve fund. You are actually funding that reserve fund from cash, meaning that you'll just set aside the cash that you already have in your fund balance, and that will set aside until the end of the bond issue. And that is just there, again, for emergency purposes to help make the debt payment if revenues of the system would slack off for some reason or another. So they did talk about your very healthy, that you have healthy liquidity, and that part of that is due to the fact that you have some planned spend down. They do understand that there will be some spend down of those balances over the next years, and not only for debt payments, but also just some projects that you've, you've been putting, let's say, cash away for as you've increased the rates on the system. So they do talk about your management being strong, and how the recent rate increases have averaged between 2.5 to 6% over the last few years. So again, they've got their fine print on that, but they were also reviewing your water system at this point in time. There was no necessity, they did ask a few questions about your sewer system, but they did not give a report on the sewer because we were not doing a bond issue at this time on the sewer. So no report was given. We just had to answer a few questions, just to know that you still had a sewer system and that it was still functioning, and that there was still money in that account. So those were really their questions. We have Robert Baird again coming in as our low bidder at that 2.81%. It's about $262,000 of interest compared to that 3.26% interest rate from UBS. I will say this, the state of Iowa has very good repayment history when it comes to bond issues, whether they're issues, whether they're general obligation or their water revenue. Robert Baird, being a Midwestern firm, knows that. So UBS, although it was nice to see them bid, and it was still lower than really what our projections were, probably sitting on the East Coast, they may not have as good of a grasp of what's going on in Iowa, and really where those bonds should be priced at. You know, they started at a three and went down to a 3.25. Not a whole lot of difference, but enough difference to make a pretty significant interest rate difference when, when looking at those, so. The final debt service schedule is on the back page, and again, that does still have a call at same timeframe, because they're the same maturity of bonds, that June 1st of 2025. That means when you hit that date, you have some options, whether that's redemption, refunding, or just to continue and pay at the level that you're already paying at, so. Any questions with that?
Is that call just a one-time option, or is it through the rest of the?
Nope, it's anything after that. So that's a very good question. So if, if you did not have money ahead on June 1st of 2025, but maybe by June 1st of '26, or even December 1st of '25 or '26, you can make that redemption. All you have to do is give, we have to give 30 days' notice. There's a redemption resolution that you would take action on, and we just have to give the bondholders 30 days' notice. We would send it to your registrar and paying agent. They would put that out in the market, and then you'd be able to redeem in whole or in part.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Maggie, and all of your staff, for the work that you've done on this, and your time spent here today, and everything looks very good. Appreciate it.
So this time, we might really need an amendment?
We do need an amendment, yeah.
So I will amend my motion to the corrected figure of $1,655,000 of revenue bonds.
And I'll second that again.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to amend the resolution to $1,655,000 in water revenue bonds. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Not for the amendment.
Not for the amendment.
Not for the amendment.
I think, and I think we, we've got Valerie here.
Yep. I think we're good now. Any other discussion?
I have to admit, as a math professor in charge of our actuarial science department, this is like, this is the financial math that I've like, learned in the last few years. I'm totally geeking out on the chart here, so I'm, it's like, oh, that's the McCauley duration, isn't it?
It makes me excited.
Very good. Roll call vote.
Draykow?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Frosty?
Yes.
Wallstein?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Resolution 1890, passed, 5-0, two absent. Item number four, approving resolution 1892, a resolution approving the professional services agreement with WHKS and Company of Mason City, Iowa, for the Adams Parkway Bridge repair and Horton Road improvements 2019 project. Entertainer motion, please.
I'll move resolution 1892, a resolution approving the professional services agreement with WHKS and Company of Mason City, Iowa, for services associated with the development of plans and specifications for the Adams Parkway Bridge repair and Horton Road improvements 2019 project for the not-to-exceed fee of $38,400, including expenses.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Council discussion. Input from Mr. Cherry.
I'd love to give some. This is an opportunity to educate the council, educate the public, and educate TAB, so.
Work in progress. Yeah. We, we may be here a while.
Oh, this, this.
Sorry, Tim.
I'm listening.
This presentation's very brief, but we have Mr. Day out with the president of WHKS and Company down here, so if there are any questions in regards to the agreement, he's here and available to address any questions that you have. So with the Adams Parkway Bridge, it was built in 1968, so it is 50 years old this year. And what we are looking at is bridge deck improvements or repairs that would take place next spring. This was talked about going through our budget process. Now, these bridge repairs have been delayed a year, and that is the result of the Bremer Avenue project. We had been looking at and planning for, for this project, going back probably about five years ago now. And we had to do some rescheduling because of the Bremer Avenue work to get it to fit, so we wouldn't bring the entire community to a standstill. But what, what do we do when we do bridge deck repairs? This is something that is, is very common, that goes on all over the state, all over the country. Usually, you, you take note of it when you're on the interstate, and you, you end up being notified of a, of road construction 10 miles ahead of the project. And you get up there, and you see, oh, they're working on one, one lane of the bridge at that point. And, and this is what they're addressing. So you have spalling in the surface. This is the result of, who else is just going to let me talk, but, but just wear and tear and de-icing chemicals and those types of things. The bridge deck is 50 years old, so you're going to start seeing this type of deterioration first that will show up. We have it going, if you look on the left side of centerline, picture on the right, it goes all the way across the bridge deck, about every, every 30 feet or so that you'll, you'll start to see this type of deterioration. The bridge approaches, as you, you transition from the roadbed onto the bridge deck, there is a joint, and these joints are deteriorating. With the Bremer Avenue work, they rebuilt these, bridge joints on the Bremer Avenue Bridge as part of that project. We would do similar on this project as well. The bridge deck repairs also, we address the bridge approaches. Oftentimes, these approaches, even after 50 years, continue to see settlement, and you'll, you'll start to notice a bump as you come onto the bridge or leave the bridge. And so as part of these, bridge deck repairs is very common, again, to, to redo the bridge approaches to create a smooth transition on and off, which, again, helps to extend the life of the bridge, because it doesn't have that impact loading as vehicles are coming onto the bridge deck. So definitions for non-brIDGE folks, TAB, you would have a full-depth repair, and. May I help you over here? Can you use the mouse? Okay. Show up? Yeah, okay. So you'll, you'll see in the slides to come that they, they do a thin grinding of the surface, which is, as you can see here, a quarter of an inch grinding on the surface. And then they will mark out and either do a partial depth repair or a full depth repair that goes all the way through the deck. And then the final process is to put a new deck surface on, and this is typically about an inch and a half or less of a new bridge deck surface.
Whatever the depth repair is, it's all the way across, correct? Whatever they determine? Or do they just pick spots that need the deep?
You'll see, you'll see examples here coming up real quick. So first step is, is they do the grinding, so they, they're milling off just about a quarter inch on the surface. And, and well, does that help to, so it bonds, the new, the new concrete surface will bond to it. And this is showing a partial depth repair. So there are two layers of crisscross reinforcing, and the partial depth repair only goes through the top layer of reinforcing. A full-depth repair would go through both layers of reinforcing. And in this photo, you can see the workers down below the bridge deck. So this type of a repair is certainly more involved, because you have to get to the under, you know, you're working over the, over a river, you have to get to the underside, you have to secure a form or plywood so that they can come in and pour a new concrete deck in this location.
But just out of curiosity, and so I understand better, whatever they determine is necessary, whether it's partial depth or full depth, once that determination has been made, it's some part of the bridge, then is that carried out across the entire bridge? Or does it vary from place to place depending upon the amount of repair that's needed in certain spots?
It, it, yep. As you can see in this picture, in the lower right, you have one that looks like it might be about four foot by five foot.
I see, so it's just those spots?
Right, yep. And the way they determine where these repairs are is, is it?
After they grind it off.
Yeah, is it dragging a chain? Yeah, you, you drag a heavy chain across, and, and you, you can hear the difference. You can hear the areas that sound like they're kind of hollow, and that's where you're starting to get spalling and delamination.
Kind of like thumping watermelons, but on a much bigger scale.
There you go.
Looking for that sweet spot.
That's a good analogy.
There you go.
In this one, they're, they're placing the new layer of concrete. Again, this is only about inch and a quarter, inch and a half thick. And this shows you the finished product. With this bridge, we have the ability to detour, and so we'd look at closing the entire bridge down, which will help speed up the work as well. Well, and then the new bridge approach joint, so that we have a good transition, that work would also be done. Now, the one thing that we, I talked about is, is doing these, these new asphalt bridge approaches as you come up to it. And that got us thinking that if we're going to be bringing in a milling machine and asphalt crew, this might be a good opportunity to look at, at doing a repair project and making some roadway improvements up by Heinz Edition. It's about 1,300-foot stretch of roadway. And here you can see the condition of that piece. This section was not done, was not part of the 2000 or 2001 project. So this is an older section of the roadway, and I guess we, we saw this as an opportune time. It does increase the cost. We had a $350,000 budget. This would take it up to about $425,000. So I guess what I would encourage to do is, for now, we, we look at keeping it in, and at least let us get through the design process and get to a, a better cost estimate, a detailed cost estimate, and at that point, make the decision whether to keep it in or remove it from the project.
Will the design be applicable later if we were to decide not to go forward with it?
Probably not.
Okay.
Probably not. We do have pretty good cushion right now in the cost estimate. There, there's like a 20% contingency on the bridge work, but that is, again, very common at this point in the process, is to have a pretty sizable cushion, then as you get further into the design process and get more, more detail to the plans, and you can refine that, then, then we, we start eliminating that contingency, and we're getting down to a final estimated cost that would be reflective of good bids during a good-bid environment.
Has any thought been given to looking at some type of inner rail on the walking surface that's there, seeing how that's such a tight?
And that would make it even tighter. So.
Posting cable-type barrier would add some safety there, or a little separation between the pedestrian and the vehicle traffic.
We, we did look at some of those things like 20 years ago. We looked at, can the bridge deck be widened? And things like the, the vehicle barrier rail was actually set to the outside, so would you move that in and do a chain-link fence on the outside? Because, again, the, the vehicle barrier rail is on the outside of the sidewalk. So we've only got about five feet right now, and if you even put in a chain-link fence in, it's going to squeeze it down and make it feel like it's about four foot. So it creates some other, other challenges at the point we do that.
Have we, have we had many accidents related to that over the 50 years? Or however long we've had the walkway?
I can't recall.
Yeah, yeah. Or even endangered? You can't recall any? Okay.
Depends on how you define endangered. You know, people zip across there, and you just.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's a, there's a one-foot curb.
Yeah.
From the sidewalk down to the roadway, which, without having, having that pedestrian fence, it, at least if some, if you get a conflict where you get bikes or something, you can step off. There is a, a five-foot paved shoulder on the bridge deck. Three foot. 12-foot lanes, three-foot shoulder. So there is, there is space.
I mean, bikes shouldn't really be on the sidewalk anyway, right?
No.
But, but the reality is, is that if you have seven and eight-year-olds.
Yeah.
Do you want them down on the bridge deck, or do you want them?
Yeah.
Up, you know? Parents' judgment there.
So with the Horton Road improvements, are you going to look at putting sort of wide shoulder?
I'm writing.
On that east side of that Horton Road? Because that's a, that's almost more dangerous, is rounding that curve off Levers Lane and walking to the bridge. There's no shoulder, and, I mean, there's a little bit of a shoulder, but it's precarious.
Right. So we're, we're growing the project here.
Just hypothetically.
I, I know, adding, adding paved shoulders gets you the section up by, the 1,300 feet up by Heinz Edition. That will probably double the cost of doing the asphalt work.
How about if you did it from Cedar Lane to the bridge?
And.
Most, most walkers, I would say, most joggers are making the loop around Cedar Lane.
That has paved shoulders from Cedar Lane, Cedar Lane to the bridge.
It does.
It does on the east side, and there's, I think, a partial one on the.
It's just covered with gravel.
It's covered with gravel?
Yeah.
Okay. So there's pavement under there somewhere.
Well, there, there's like a six-foot wide paved shoulder on the east side from, from the sidewalk on the bridge over to Cedar Lane. That, that is there.
Mike, the, the bridge itself, what kind of shape is that in? The beams and piers and all of that kind of stuff? We're just talking about redoing the decking here.
Correct.
What, is, is that in pretty good shape yet?
Uh, yes. This is, again, this is very common, that, you know, bridges last 75 to 100 years, but that doesn't mean zero maintenance. And it's very common about halfway through their life to, to do this type of a bridge deck repair.
Would you anticipate that this, right, bridge deck then, what, 30 years' life, something like that?
Yeah, yeah.
And, and you said that the bridge would be closed, so we'd be doing a detour. Detour going to be on Cedar Lane?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to have some traffic issues on Cedar Lane.
Which some of the neighbors there have had concerns about the shape of the road, the condition of the road as well.
How, how long are you anticipating that the bridge will be closed?
Uh, six weeks.
Six weeks. And we can have stage it, because of the type of bridge it is, we can have stage it and strike. It has to be closed.
All right. Well, we may just have to make sure that we take, do what we can for safety issues on Cedar Lane, because additional traffic on there is going to make it even more of an issue.
Yeah, we kind of have it now, but yes, this will, will certainly add to it.
Plus the wear and tear on the driving surface, which.
Right.
So for the Cedar Lane folks, we're going to go from, you know, maybe quite a bit more traffic to no traffic, because the intent is that after July, we rebuild the south end of Cedar Lane. Just can't win. But we'll get through it.
So Mike, you were talking about these partial bids, or partial rebuilds versus full rebuilds, and we won't have a good sense of how much of each will be done until this is done or until construction starts?
Well, right now.
Or like, they take that, that quarter inch off? Is that when they figure out where they need the partial or the full?
They did a bridge inspection this past summer where they, with a sniper truck, actually got down underneath and were able to inspect the bottom side of the bridge deck. And my recollection is, right now, everything appears to be a partial depth.
Okay.
Yeah, that's when you want to do it.
So, so, so we have an estimate of how much of this is going to be partial versus full versus just a quarter inch?
Well, everything's a quarter inch.
There's quarter inch taking off of everything.
Right.
But there's a quarter inch or partial or full?
Quarter inch and partial or full.
Well, yeah, I mean, well, yeah, the quarter and the partial.
Right now, from the last bridge inspection, the indication were that everything would be a partial depth repair.
Everywhere that there is repair done is partial depth.
Right. What you see up on top does not penetrate all the way through.
I, I suppose my question is, at what point are we going to have a good cost estimate for how much is? for how much is partial rebuild versus full rebuild versus just the quarter inch cover?
What...
I mean, is that going to be done with this estimate or is it not going to be really resolved until that layer is taken off?
If, question for Fuad. So right now, it looks like everything's going to be partial depth.
Right, plus A.
But if we get into it and we discover that we probably need to do a full depth, do we require that to be a bid item just in case?
The contractor will have a unit price. So if we do have full...
Would you mind stepping up to the mic quick?
Phone, yeah.
Please.
Good evening. I'm Fuad Dawud. Thanks for having us here tonight. So you are correct, after we take the quarter inch, our original estimate right now is based on what we call Class A or a partial depth. But like Mike indicated, we had a snooper and we got underneath, so we're not anticipating any full penetration. However, after we take the quarter inch off, if we find that we do need it, normally there's a bid item just in case we do have a Class B or a full depth repair that the contractor then would use that unit during construction.
I suppose my thought is, if we're anticipating one price and then suddenly the price goes up significantly, that may be when we want to dial back on this other resurfacing north of the bridge that you're looking at.
Right.
Would that still be an option? At what point can we say, you know, this is more expensive, maybe we want to get out of this side of the contract?
But really, we're not anticipating any full because we had a snooper and got underneath.
Sure, sure.
I think going into the project, we would want to, let's say the bids came in at $200,000 for the bridge work. We may want to plan on having another $20,000 kind of set aside.
Some contingency, sure.
Because, again, we're going to estimate the size of these patch areas and they may end up being a little bit larger, though I think that's probably a very common situation is, in the field, they have to make determination, what are the boundaries of each patch? And you can have another eight months of deterioration. It's going to go through the winter, so this stuff is not going to heal. It's only going to expand and get worse. So, again, in the bids, we try to have a good reflection of what the project involves, but we may also, from a practical budgeting standpoint, don't overextend ourselves as we know that in a project like this, we may end up having to enlarge the patch areas.
I think that was the ultimate question in a sense, is like whether or not it's partial or full depth was not really the issue at hand. I know it's going to be partial as we think it, but are you estimating 15% of the surface area is needing to be done? What if it's 25? That's kind of the question I think you were getting at, is we assume based on that dollar amount, a certain amount of the surface area will be partial depth. What if it's worse? What if there's more quantity needed because instead of, as I said, 15, it's 25 now because the winter made it worse?
Right.
That's where we'll have to run into that decision-making kind of in a tight window once we figure that out. And you won't know that until you grind off the quarter inch, thump the melon, see where all the bad parts are.
But we will have, we do have some sense of how much is going to be required based on the snooper underneath, so we've got some sense...
I know, initial work. Yep, that is correct.
And based on, you know, the hundreds of bridge deck projects they've done, they can kind of probably anticipate how much...
That is correct.
How much they could be off by, like how much things could change. Sure.
And remind me, please, what we budgeted for this?
350.
Okay.
Three and a half.
For just the surface repair?
Just the bridge.
Yeah.
Not the extra milling for the road, but just the bridge itself.
Which you said could bring it up to 425.
The, right.
For now, I mean, yeah. And if we decided, I mean, to do that, do you have any ideas about where that would come from?
We have 100, or all this gift from bond sales.
No, it doesn't quite work like that.
It doesn't work like that.
It's, it could. You just have to amend the, we'll cover that when we get there.
Okay, all right.
You have to make sure the description of what you sold them for, the bond attorney's okay with it being part of the vague description we try to make. We have possible sourcing from road use tax, from local option tax. I mean, there's some, we're talking a smaller amount like that 50, 60,000. We could piece it in depending on what the bids came in at. So I think we could locate it if it's, council's wish to go forward.
Okay.
And just, so you quoted about 30-year lifespan for this repair?
Yes.
Okay.
Twenty, 30 years.
So I'm going to throw out the Cedar Parkway Bridge that we're just now building. How long do we expect that to be before it requires maintenance? Is that like a 50 years like this?
Probably about 50 years, yep.
So we won't have repairs on these two occurring at the same time 30 years from now? We won't have them, like two of these things going on at the same time? There should be like a 20-year gap between them ideally?
30 years from now, say absolutely not.
Mike will not be here.
Not my problem.
I guarantee as long as I'm here, in 30 years, it will not be an issue. It'll be fine.
Okay.
Knowing that there isn't a good time to schedule, I'm just questioning if I'm understanding the schedule, construction would be April through June of 19, which is still within the school year and with Cary School and...
So, yeah, now, that's the window to do a six-week project. So we can't specify, it's not a good bidding practice to specify...
Demand this date to this date.
Right, right.
Six weeks is six weeks.
So typically, the construction season starts April 1st. We want them done by 4th of July because we're going to set Cedar Lane up that they can start after the 4th of July. So you conceivably, if they do the bridge work late and they start Cedar Lane right away, we could literally have back-to-back projects. But we just don't want them to overlap.
In what year are we talking about?
Next year.
Spring.
Spring, okay. For a moment, I thought...
Less than a year from now.
Yeah.
Want to make sure that we keep the school in mind and work with them as we get into the detouring and that type of thing so they can plan their bus routes. Folks on the north end of town be coming into Cary School and...
For just a moment, I thought it was the same year as the fireman's thing.
No.
It would be disastrous, right?
Same fiscal year, not same calendar year.
Well, just to remind you, I mean, the discussion's all been very good, but we're voting on a professional services agreement with WHKS and we'll discuss the bridge and the rest of it when it comes.
We're investing time now for less time later.
We tend to do that.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Questions for Mike or Mr. Fuad? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Mackenzie?
Yes.
Roffey?
Yes.
Paulsen?
Yes.
Motion carried, 502 absent. Item number five, approving Resolution 1891, a resolution approving the final plat and restrictive covenants for the replat of Lot 15, Rolling Hills, second addition for eight residential lots on Viola Drive and southeast Waverly. Entertained a motion, please. Would move approval of Resolution 1891 as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Council discussion. Anyone in the audience has any input on this?
Good evening. I'm Bo Boo-Caltz and I'm here in representation of the two entities that own this property and have made this request. We've been before the council a few times. We had to rezone this to an R2 property to get that established, so now we're asking for a final plat. Planning and zoning did unanimously approve both our preliminary and final. So again, this is the Rolling Hills development. This was a condominium regime that just never really took off. So we've taken it, redeveloped it, repackaged it to make it akin to what's out there already, and that's residential lots. So the size of these lots are really going to mirror what we already have out there. We're going to get water and sewer, which is really essentially out there in a main way already, but we'll get it subbed into all the individual lots. And the hope is just to make this look like the rest of the neighborhood out there.
I get it.
Happy to answer any questions, too, if there are any.
I'm not sure if this is a question for you or Bill or James, but the inclusion of the restrictive covenant, what bearing does that have, I guess, on this proceeding?
Whenever we do a preliminary plat or a final plat like this, oftentimes for these residential subdivisions, we'll have some restrictive covenants. Homes have to be this size. We're going to have concrete driveways, things of that nature. In this one, and I think it's in the materials hopefully that you guys have, it's very scaled back because Rolling Hills already has its own restrictive covenant set, which still applies to this lot. So there's a couple of things that we've added to better define us as the developers because the developer that previously existed out there doesn't exist anymore. Otherwise, with those minor exceptions, we're just reminding everybody that, hey, Rolling Hills, restrictive covenants still apply to this property.
But as a city, we have no obligation to oversee and force the covenant. That would be...
That would be a private homeowner issue. You know, sometimes you'll run into this, somebody's running a business out of their home and it's against restrictive covenants. One of the other homeowners out there would have to technically bring a legal action to challenge that. So it has nothing to do with the city necessarily that way.
It's surprising. I mean, I remember this from my years on planning and zoning. It's surprising how many developments have covenants. I mean, I found it surprising anyway.
I guess reason for asking is I've had a couple of questions on them and how to have them enforced and they were kind of looking for the city to take ownership of that. And I says, now, that's really not ours to deal with.
Yep.
So Bo, I just had a question about the layout of the lots.
Yeah.
On the two ends of that street, are those just going to be larger lots or...
Yeah. So on the west end, which is Lot 1 of 15, the difficulty there is obviously the road curves, so we only have so much access. So that's just going to be a larger lot. That's going to be about a .7-acre lot on that side. Now, on the east side, that is still the, that's the only part of this condominium regime that took off. So there's already a cul-de-sac there, three homes are built there. That is the last remaining area of the condominium regime. That'll stay a condominium regime. That will not be part of this subdivision.
Gotcha.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Bo.
Thank you.
For your input. Any other questions, comments by the council? Roll call vote, please.
Roffey?
Yes.
Paulsen?
Yes.
Drakeout?
Yes.
Mackenzie?
Yes. Resolution 1891 passed, 502 absent. Resolution 1893, accepting sanitary sewer manhole rehabilitation, 2018 project is complete and approving pay estimate number one as final pay request to Josh's construction of Dubuque, Iowa. Entertained a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 1893, accepting the sanitary sewer manhole rehabilitation, 2018 project as complete and approving pay estimate number one in the amount of $21,531.70 as final pay request to Josh's construction of Dubuque, Iowa.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Paulsen?
Yes.
Roffey?
Yes.
Drakeout?
Yes.
Mackenzie?
Yes.
Roffey?
Yes.
Motion carried, 502 absent. Item number seven, approving Resolution 1894, adopting financial policies for the city of Waverly. Entertained a motion.
I'll move approval of the submitted financial policies for the city of Waverly.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Council discussion.
I find it kind of hard to believe that we haven't had these in the past.
Me, too.
And we have just been apparently going by what people can remember we have done in the past. I think this is quite well-written. I've got tabs all over it, not that I'm going to be discussing and questioning any of it, but just some spots that I highlighted. So I think that this is well-put together and certainly past due that we have this in writing and something that we can build on. If there are some things that we need to change in the future or things we need to discuss, we can then do that. I know one of the things that I would have discussed or talked about in the past are the TIF policies. And, you know, a lot of municipalities are looking at, you know, how they're using TIF money and using it for some of the reasons that it was originally, that the TIF program is originally implemented rather than as a financing mechanism. And, you know, I'm certainly not going to belabor that tonight and I'm certainly going to support what's in here, but this does give us an opportunity. When the question arises, we have something to look at and say, well, this is what we have in our policy. So I commend whoever it was that came up with this. And like I said, I'm surprised we haven't had this in the past.
Well, and I fully intend this to be a working document. Again, we just wanted you to draft this done and we plagiar borrowed from other cities, which is common practice among other cities.
It's called research.
We did. Because a lot of them have very good policies, very simply read, a lot of this from the city of Ankeny, AAA bondholder. And those are the ones I like to sample from because we aspire to be that someday, too. And that's the one thing that we will start to adjust at some point in time. And we get to where we think we're in a better position for Moody's or someone to say, we are looking at an upgrade, your fund balance requirements have to increase to achieve that. And a number of other things would have to change slightly. But we are not in that kind of a shape right now just because we are in a heavy borrowing mode for some of the project work we're doing. Once we get past that mode and kind of settle back in, then we start to look at revamping some of this or changing things such as TIF, which we can definitely talk about in a study session, how do we want to phrase it? But our goal was just to get a ground policy in to start from. We did have an investment policy prior, but this was kind of everything. Our next step will be probably purchasing policies to get into those, which are even a little messier than this on authority and how much you want to grant towards, whether it be myself, staff, if any at all. But, so I appreciate, you know, the council taking a look at this. And again, we're open to any kind of discussion, changes to it. It just was getting something on the books to start with.
Yeah, I'll add as a newbie on the council, I think city finance is the most complicated thing to learn and I found this pretty easy to read. I mean, I think TIF is the most complicated part.
Absolutely.
So I'm always appreciative of any sort of background info about, basic about TIF, but I applaud you for your effort because I think it's very well-written.
I guess I would just ask, you know, in the discussion of this, you know, Dan, who's really our senior member on the council, especially with regard to TIF. But if you want to comment on anything else, Dan, too, but if you're seeing anything in the TIF policy in particular that you think, you know, is, we need to discuss further based on, you know, past experience? I mean, I've been part of some TIF decisions, but still not quite as many as Dan has.
Very good general comment, Jeff. I think it's well-put together and seeing how it's 22 pages, I realize why I didn't go into finance. There is a lot to it and it will be nice to go back and refresh ourselves periodically. TIF, again, sometimes that becomes a discussion on, was it really a good idea to begin with type thing? So again, I think historically we have used it the way it was intended. We haven't abused it, those type of things. I think with some of the things we've done recently with redoing the districts, allowing some of it to sunset and go back into the general fund, I think, shows some responsibility there. Personally, I think it's a great tool to leverage when it's meeting the objective of what TIF is for, those type of things. So, no, again, I thought it was a great document. It's put a lot of what's been passed down through the ages in paper. So I think we've followed a lot of these in the past, just not necessarily knew it or we could go to a document and say, this is why we're doing it, so...
That's a lot of the intent. You know, people ask, do we have a documented policy to follow? And we try to craft it so that it didn't hamstring us to where we can't actually accomplish that because why would you put something in you can't actually accomplish? So we try to maintain some of what we're currently doing with a little more of an aspirational sense to what would we like to do going forward. And as the legislature changes TIF, and they will change it probably next year or more, we will adjust as well and readapt. And that's why as a resolution, instead of an ordinance, this will be a little easier for us to keep up and probably bring you annually to see if there have been changes or needs to adjust as we work through some of these projects.
Actually, the policy requires an annual review. So if we pass it, we'll be required to review it annually as part of the budget process. But I want to just make it very clear here. I wasn't insinuating that we were... I wasn't insinuating that we were misusing TIF money or that TIF was being used in an improper way, not in any sense in imagination. I'm, you know, I... My point was that this document will give us the opportunity to say, you know, these are the policies we currently have for using TIF. It will give us the opportunity to say, are those policies still the policies we want to carry forward or look at making some changes to? So I want to make that very clear to the... My colleagues here on the council and people that are listening, that I did not want to insinuate in any way that there is any issue with the way that we were using TIF funds.
Yeah, I should have coached my response. I was thinking more globally.
Right, yeah, and I understand that, too, but, you know...
Yep, but I appreciate you clarifying that because I certainly wasn't suggesting that, so.
So I have a question on my limited knowledge. On page sixteen, under section five, which is instruments eligible for investment, I know that we have this new leisure services fund where people... Foundation where people can donate money into that. Is that this Iowa Public Agency Investment Trust, or is that... I mean, so is that investment included on this list? Should it be... Are we... I mean, is that Iowa, like the Leisure Services Trust? I mean, that's somewhere that we're investing money. Should that somehow be included as one of the places we're allowed to invest money?
This is not really that kind of an investment. When you look at... Most of what we're investing here is the actual fund balance of what we have, so we may have to take that in, pull it out at any given point in time. When you put in that trust, you want to leave it there or use it for a specific project, and so that would not really fit into the need of what we're doing here. As Jennifer can tell you, we're very limited in what we can invest in our fund balances, so to speak. So it's not necessarily a budget decision to allocate funding over here to sit for a project. This is the remaining balances we have for our day-to-day operations being invested, and IPAT is, as it says, is a public agency trust. A lot of cities invest in that. It's kind of statewide, monitored by the state, or we can get into CDs and all the very boring, low-interest driving instruments out there, but we do not get in anything such as separate trusts with our fund balances.
So that trust is not considered an investment, so this policy does not apply to that.
This is more for operational funding as it sits versus a trust that we would want to allocate funding over for a project.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that if we had this fund, I wanted to make sure that we weren't putting a policy that we were already in violation of, so.
No, not at all. Again, you'd be allocating money out of a budget, you'd be tacking forward. This is our leftover, so to speak, our fund balance, our carryover, our bond proceeds.
This is our cash, as it would.
This is what we have for operational need and debt service to maintain our operations, not a project-driven project or fund, I guess it would be. A very good question.
Jennifer, do you have any... Jennifer, do you have anything that you'd like to add to this discussion?
No, I think it's been well discussed.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Well said.
Okay, any other questions, discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Rothstein?
Yes.
Bergin?
Yes.
Drenkow?
Yes.
Kenzie?
Yes.
Rothstein?
Yes.
Motion carried, five zero two absent. Item number eight, approving resolution eighteen ninety-five, authorizing acquisition of temporary construction easement for the Cedar River Parkway East project. Entertained a motion.
I'll move the approval of resolution eighteen ninety-five, authorizing acquisition of temporary construction easement and resolving liability claim with Michael Lawood for the Cedar River Parkway East project for the sum of $10,000.
Second.
Bill, would you like to enlighten us on this?
Well, sometimes we get things that don't always happen the way we want them to. We had a 40-foot permanent easement that we would clear... We're going to clear to put in the drain pipe from the drainage area into the river. The original engineering documents showed that there'd be additional 10 feet on each side of that. When the documents came to acquire the property, they had excluded that. They didn't include that in the acquisitions, and then they told us they didn't need it, and then it stayed in the project plans for the guys who were taking down the trees, and they took down the trees very quickly and very promptly when they shouldn't have. So we just paid for that easement and after the fact. And in fact, Stanley paid for half that, and we paid for the other half, so we... Our funds are $5,000 towards that additional easement.
Very good. Council discussion. Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Bergin?
Yes.
Drenkow?
Yes.
Kenzie?
Yes.
Rothstein?
Yes.
Motion carried, five zero two absent. Item number nine, approving second reading of ordinance 1047 and ordinance amending section 105.3.01 regarding speed restrictions of the Waverly Municipal Code. Entertained a motion, please.
I'll move second reading of ordinance 1047 as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Council discussion.
Thank you for the map.
Yeah, I was going to say thank you for the map. It made a huge difference.
They didn't have to create it. It did exist, so we just found it for you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I will observe that even though the Cedar Parkway Bridge and New Road is not on the map, it is included in the ordinance as written.
We'll draw in the number... We'll draw in those lines.
We'll draw that line in, yeah. You can freehand it. You can just draw it on the screen.
Any other comments, discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Drenkow?
Yes.
Kenzie?
Yes.
Rothstein?
Yes.
Bergin?
Yes.
Motion carried, five zero two absent. Item number 10, approving the third and final reading of ordinance 1046 and ordinance amending section 100.4 of the Waverly Municipal Code, providing for addition of section 100.4.14, conversion to condominium or multiple family housing cooperative. Entertained a motion, please.
I'll move the approval of the third and final reading of ordinance 1046 as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Council discussion. Anyone in the audience speak to this? Roll call vote, please.
Kenzie?
Yes.
Rothstein?
Yes.
Rothstein?
Yes.
Bergin?
Yes.
Drenkow?
Yes.
Motion carried, five zero two absent. Item number 11, approval of mayoral appointments. I would like to have approval to reappoint Brittany Dirks on the Economic Development Commission for a term ending July 2021, and Deb Schroeder reappointed on the Economic Development Commission for a term ending July 21, 2021. Margaret Caneely is on hold, so let's not vote on her tonight.
Move approval of the mayoral appointments.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have a...
They've been very active members of the Economic Development Commission, so I encourage us to approve it.
I just had a question of what's the average length of time that people serve? And they're three-year terms. I know Brittany came on partway through a term.
Right.
I'm not sure. I've only been doing this for four years, so it's... Most of these people were... This is their first or second term. I know that there are a lot of them that are fairly new, and they're on their... They're starting their second terms. I think Brittany was a... Filled a short... A shorter term, her first.
This would be, if I remember right from conversation with Deb Schroeder, this will be her third three-year term, and she made it clear that it would be the last one. But, no.
She's served as the chair for a few years.
Yep. Any other discussion? Those in favor of approving Brittany Dirks and Deb Schroeder to the Economic Development Commission say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed? Motion carried, five zero two absent. Reports from boards and commissions. Monthly financials?
Just a real quick question there. The first page, highlights for the month ending May 2018. There's a statement that local option sales tax is 89% of what was budgeted. Knowing that the dry-run project is financed with... Does that mean sales tax is not where we had hoped it would be, or we just haven't collected?
We just haven't collected it all yet. We're hoping there's another payment coming in, and it figures it's not going to be what we have gotten every month, but kind of rounding off the year, so we should get another payment.
Okay, so we're not in fear of running short on the local options?
Not yet.
Okay.
Next item is the monthly financials are received. Premier Waverly Law Board minutes. Received in the record, senior calendar, which is the senior center. Received in the record, staff comments.
We have a couple of events this weekend. First thing, we have a Saturday swim meet, so there'll be about 200 kids and their parents around the pool area on Saturday morning. In addition, the Fairgrounds is hosting the second... For the second time, the Waldo Kennel Club, so this is like a AKC show, like Westminster and that sort of thing. There's at least 500 dogs and all their handlers and that sort of thing coming to the Fairgrounds, and they'll be staying in RVs. I've given them permission to camp. They're going to rent the property. They're renting some from the Fair Board as well, so hopefully it'll be a good, dry year. Last year, they rained the entire weekend, and this is the thing about how they run around in a loop with their dogs, but they also have different contests, like they have to find stuff in the straw, and they have agility things and that sort of thing. It's all like AKC stuff, so it'll be pretty cool. We're supposed to have like the top-rated boxer in the country come.
We were hoping for like a hot dog eating contest, but they didn't think that was a good idea, so it's probably not going to happen.
They're going to put more poop bag sponsors on.
I'd kind of like to see it, but it's not going to happen.
Is that event open to the public?
It sure is, yep.
Okay. Be quite a sight to see. It's a lot of... And these are animals that travel the entire country competing. It's something, so.
Hey, Mike says we're really going to the dogs. The judges for this event is, honestly, from all over the country, so it's a pretty cool event.
With all kidding aside, it is a very serious competition. There's points or nationals. It's going to be something to see it.
They come in on Thursday. The events are Friday, Saturday, and they end on Sunday.
And are the events in the 4H building or something, or are they outdoors?
They're going to be... They're going to put a large tent up on the westernmost diamond, and that's where mostly the events are going to be.
Do we give them anything that helps them get downtown easily?
Any sort of shuttle?
No, I just mean even instructions, you know, just for the businesses that they might want to support.
Yeah, the chamber's putting together a packet for them, so hopefully they have something like that for them.
Very good. I've watched a dog show on television several times, and it's quite a show, so... Very good. Any other staff comments?
I don't think we have any more, sir.
Okay, very good. Council comments?
I suppose I would like to remind the public that we have our new fireworks ordinance. I've heard a few going off prematurely.
It's accidental, I'm sure.
I'm sure. It may have been someone outside of city limits, and the sound just echoed really far, but fireworks are legal in the city starting a week from today, the 25th. I don't remember what time they are allowed to start, but I know they're supposed to end by 10:00 PM, so.
Noon, mid-ten.
Noon, so 12:01 PM, not 12:01 AM. 12:01 PM is the way you can start your fireworks, so enjoy the Fourth of July holiday safely.
I'd just like to thank city's staff for the work with Spear and with Moody's. I mean, I think that's a really... A real compliment to the work that you've done.
I'll say that I've been attending the Heritage Days committee meetings, and those volunteers work hard, so I would encourage people to help out. They're going to put on their website some opportunities for people to volunteer. It's a big event, and they really work hard to make it nice, so that is the weekend of July 19th. Put it on your calendars.
April 21st.
Yep.
Okay, any others?
Quick question with the river going up and down. How is that impacting the bridge work on Parkway?
Well, they always have something to do, so they shift it focus, and obviously they're here to's in the river, and it was flooded out. It should be drying out now. They simply shift it to some other work. They always kind of schedule it and stage it so they've got some backup things that they can do in the event that they do get flooded out. So that's just good planning. Otherwise, the roadway work continues.
Thank you. Any other council comments? I only have a couple. Brian made mention of the fireworks. I also would like to make mention to remind the public to take a good look at their probably utility bills that came to make sure that they follow the instructions and pay by check or cash or credit card or something to... Because then next month, the automatic payments and everything will go into effect again, so. And then I had a question from some citizens regarding the utility bills. If the drop box is presently in the alley here, will remain? I know there's a drop box at Waverly Utilities Office, but...
It will not. Otherwise, we will have to have people go out, try and sort it, and we do a variety of things in that drop box, from dropping off keys for City Hall for events, from the pro shop. We're going to move that drop box up next to the building, so it'll be used for only those purposes. Utilities would rather have those at their site, and I think they may have a drop box out there, but this one itself will not be in use for that.
No, there is a drop box at Utility Office because I saw it when I was there at the last board meeting, so.
So we'll still maintain it for the things other than utility bills, and it'll be more next to the building intentionally for that purpose.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I think with that in mind, that includes most of the meeting. We'll move into executive session to evaluate the professional competency of an individual. Is appointment, hiring, performance, or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation, and that individual requests a closed session? Entertain a motion.
I'll move to move into executive session.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those...
Roll call.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Kenzie?
Yes.
Rothstein?